And a few comments to make and some awards to make. And so I'm going to ask our Fire Chief, Chief Haney, to start off, and Assistant Chief Craig.
Good afternoon, Chairman Thompson, Chairman Thompson and the Board. The presentation I'd like to give tonight is involved several entities, one of them being one of my firefighters and the State Patrol also on an event that occurred. And the best way I can sum this up and tell you why they're receiving the Commendation Award is better yet just to read what Sheriff Chapman had wrote on behalf of the trooper and Josh. So I'll read that now for you. On January, on 7th of January, 2023, I, my son, and grandson were traveling north on Georgia 106 in Madison County on route, en route to Isla, Georgia. Traffic came to a sudden stop. We couldn't see, caused due to the UPS truck in front of us. The truck turned around and then we're, and then caused, and then we could see about five cars in front of us. We could see the trooper, excuse me. We then saw GSP car with blue lights on and a white car stopped in the middle of the roadway. We could see trooper breaking side glass out of a white car. My son and I exited our vehicle and walked up through the trooper, trooper's vehicle, and identified myself as sheriff and showed him my badge. The trooper immediately asked for help. The passenger of the white car was unconscious. The driver was very combative, yelling, yelling and punching in all directions. I asked the trooper, could he turn the vehicle off? And he did. I advised the trooper, we should get the driver handcuffed, and we did. My son Josh, who is a Walton County firefighter, EMT, advised that the two occupants appeared to be under the influence of some type of opioid, possibly fentanyl. Once the driver was secured, Josh began checking vitals on the passenger and was unresponsive. Josh asked the trooper if he had any Narcan. The trooper advised, he did, and went back to his car and retrieved it and handed it to Josh. We removed the passenger from the car and laid him on his back, once the stopped motorist approached and advised he was a doctor. He was keeping the passenger's airway open while Josh administered Narcan. I, trooper, and Madison County deputy removed the driver and placed him, and placed him sitting on the roadway. Josh administered one dose of Narcan to him. Sometime after Josh had given these doses of, three doses of Narcan to the passenger, he regained consciousness and was alert. The driver was also, became calm after one dose of Narcan. There is, there is no doubt in my mind that the actions of Georgia State Trooper Corporal L. Ray and Walton County firefighter Josh Chapman saved the life of, or if not both people. As Peace Officer and County Sheriff for over 30 years' experience, I was impressed the way that trooper Larry Ray and firefighter Josh Chapman handled a very difficult and chaotic situation. And I concur very much so. Sometimes in, in the firefighting EMS world, we're not as lucky to bring some people back, even though we use Narcan for overdose. So I concur that Josh saved this man's life, getting three doses of Narcan and then sitting up. So congratulations to Josh. Award, I'll read it out for you. It says, "This is certified firefighter two, Josh Chapman, has received a commendation for performing lifesaving medical care in reference to the care of critical patient on January 7th, 2023, while off duty." Something I forgot to mention, he was off duty. "The medical care rendered to the patient on that day undoubtedly saved his life. A copy of this commendation shall be recorded and may made a permanent record in his employee file. Thank you for your dedication service to the citizens of Walton County. Signed, February 7th, 2023. Fire Chief Kevin Haney, Chairman David Thompson." But the ceremony is not over yet. If you don't mind, would you stand right there for me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Major Wizner.
Bring your post commander, will you, please, trooper? Sure. Go ahead, we'll do them one at a time. That's okay with you? So in conjunction with the Fire Department Lifesaving Award, Walton County Sheriff's Office, greetings, let it be known, Walton County Fireman Joshua Chapman has been granted the Lifesaving Award for his highly skilled and immediate response to a life-threatening event on January 25th, 2023, which was instrumental in preserving life. His actions are in keeping with the highest traditions of public safety and the Walton County Sheriff's Office. That's his also, sure. Additionally, let it be known that Georgia State Patrol Corporal Larry Ray has been granted the Lifesaving Award for his highly skilled and immediate response to a life-threatening event on January 25th, 2023, which was instrumental in preserving life. His actions are in keeping with the highest traditions of public safety and the Walton County Sheriff's Office.
I want to tell a real light story about the incident that happened. We're walking up to trooper Ray and he was, had a very concerned look on his face. He, he was frightened, I would say.
I didn't, honestly, I didn't notice the passenger, I busted the window out and then I realized that, hey, he stumbled over, hit it back. I'm looking over that, that old window, it was very open, hard to see through. Once I saw him, I got, I figured something out. I kept looking up, I see a traffic, someone, somebody here.
We, Josh and I were walking up to the trooper and a man stopped cars, said, hey, y'all better not go up, there's something bad and wrong. Bad, he said, y'all better hurry up. Thank y'all. Firefighters, y'all do this every day, that's right, but I never get to see it. And I was impressed, especially with Josh.
Patrice, get them right here and we'll take a picture. Joe?
Appreciate what y'all do.
Joe, y'all three get right over here and let the board get behind y'all. Patrice wants a few pictures.
Got it.
Get back in here. Good job. Is it Ronnie? It's your turn, sir.
Thank you all for your time tonight and letting us come and share this call with you. This was back in May of last year, 2022, and we wanted to share with y'all what happened. Patient's name was Miss Elaine Hogan, and she was going to try to be here tonight, but I don't, I don't see her. I had talked to her yesterday. She's doing fine. Miss Elaine works over at Kelly's Barbecue, so some of you may have seen her over there at Walnut Grove. And on the morning of May 13th, 2022, she got up, said she felt fine, had gotten ready and went into, to work that morning. And she gave me permission to share this with, with y'all. When I talked to her, talked to her a couple of times. So when she got to the restaurant, said she still felt fine, everything was, seemed to be normal. And she was there about 20 minutes and suddenly collapsed onto the floor. She didn't remember collapsing, but she said she did remember feeling okay up until that point. Doesn't remember anything past that for several more days. Miss Elaine's heart had stopped beating and she had stopped breathing. She was in cardiac arrest. And Miss Elaine's friend called 911 and the dispatchers got help on the way. When our folks got there, EMS and fire arrived and started to work with Miss Elaine. They did CPR and shocked her several times and secured her airway. By the time they reached the hospital, she was awake, but not, excuse me, not awake and still not breathing on her own. When they got there, we took her to Piedmont Walton and they began to try to stabilize her. During that day, as time progressed, she went into cardiac arrest seven more times and was resuscitated each time. She was taken to the Cardiac Care Unit at Athens Regional Hospital, Piedmont, Athens. She was stabilized there. They did the hypothermic protocol on her where they lowered her body temperature and kept it down low for at least 24 hours and then warmed her back up. And three days later, she woke up and she's, she's fine. She's back at work, doing all the things that she normally did. She's got some additional hardware, pacemaker and defibrillator, and, but other than that, is doing great. And she is, she had planned to be here. I hope she's doing okay, I'm sure that she is. But the fact is that this story could have had an entirely different ending from what it did. And we know that it's by, I know that it's by the grace of God that it, that she survived that with a little help from us and people that love doing their job and love trying to make a difference in people's lives. And we want to honor and recognize those people tonight. We got some of Kevin's people and some of our people. We all respond to calls together and, and, and work together on, on calls. So we're going to present what we call, and EMS is You Made a Difference Award, and it basically says that on that date last year, May 13th, 2022, that they made a difference in Miss Elaine Hogan's life. So I'm going to call up the people that were involved in that. Kevin's going to present them with the certificate and we're going to recognize them and for the good job that, that they did. On the Fire Department's side, we have, and y'all just come on up, Mr. Wes Johnson. We'll let them all get up here and present them with a certificate, then we'll give them Wes was on the call that day, he was on Didi over there and responded to it. Mr. Luke Smith is, Mr. Luke here, there he is. Mr. Justin Oakley. Mr. Oakley was a student that day doing some ride alongs with us on the ambulance. So he got some good experience. Let's not scare him too bad, he's still with us. On EMS side, Mr. Britt Sartain, he was a paramedic that day on the ambulance. So Britt, come on up. Miss Shannon Patterson was on the ambulance that day, EMT. I taught Miss Shannon in EMT school years ago. She's still doing a good job. All these guys and women do, do a good job every day. There were a couple more people that were involved that weren't able to be here tonight. There's one from the Fire Department that is, wasn't able to be here, Cal Healy. And then also the two dispatchers that took the call that day and dispatched the call, and they're actually working tonight, 911 Center. And one was Miss Taylor Monk, who we've got them a certificate too, that we're going to get to them this week, and also Miss Lisa Greenwood. They were the dispatchers. And they're important. They're oftentimes out of sight and not out there in the forefront of things, but their jobs are very important to get the right people to the right place so that we can, can help. Out of hospital cardiac arrest, if somebody arrests out of the hospital, there's only about a 7% chance that they'll survive. So this is miraculous that this lady survived and is doing well and back to normal. Give these guys and girls a hand.
If y'all would slide down, Patrice would like to get a picture. That's right, part my heads too. I like standing behind this one, I can hide. Well, I took 16, that took 16 minutes out of everyone's time and it was well worth it. And I feel called to take about three more minutes of your time. We have heroes living, living among us all the time and you sometimes don't know. I had a family friend and neighbor to my parents, Mr. Ernest William Walls, passed away January 14th at 98 years old. And I never knew his story until I read his obituary. And I would like to read it. It's brief. "United States Army Private, First Class Ernest William Walls from Monroe, Georgia, was inducted into the 2017 Class of the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame for his heroism, determination, numerous acts of selfless bravery, bravery, wounds suffered, and deprivation as a combat infantry soldier and prisoner of war in World War II in the European Theater of Operations." Mr. Ernest and I sat on tailgates and talked while the bulldozer's running. And I never knew this. You know, there's heroes among us and we do need to honor them and thank them every day of our lives. Let me finish this. "In late 1942, and just eight days after the 18th birthday, Ernest Walls enlisted in the Army, trained as an infantry rifleman and was eventually part of F Company, 22nd Infantry Regiment, 4th Infantry Division, after much hard training both in the U.S. and in England. On D-Day, June 6th, 1944, now 19-year-old PFC Walls was part of the largest amphibious operation in the history of warfare as he and hundreds of thousands of Allied soldiers stormed the bloodstained beaches of Normandy, France. Realizing that he and his buddies would most likely die, they nonetheless courageously disembarked their landing craft and fought their way across the killing fields of Utah During the initial assault, many of his friends, his platoon leader, and his company commander were killed. Six days later, as his understrength squad conducted a night patrol, they were taken under heavy fire by the enemy, resulting in his squad being decimated and PFC Walls becoming out of action with a gunshot wound to his back. He immediately was captured and then spent the rest of the year as a POW in a German Stalag in Brandenburg, Germany. In April 1945, he was liberated by American soldiers. And in December 1945, he was honorably discharged." Great people, I never knew this. Countless times I've been around this man and never was mentioned. And I just want to take the time to honor Mr. Ernest Walls. With that being said, if y'all would please stand with, say, the Pledge of Allegiance and have amication and get this meeting started. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Father, we come to you tonight with a humble heart to thank you so much for all the first responders and all the policemen and all the heroes that we know nothing about. Please watch over them and their families. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions for the county. Please be with each one here as they leave and go home tonight and keep them safe. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let the roll call show that all commissioners are present. You've had a chance to review the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. Okay, Planning Commission, we have two cases tonight.
Yes, sir. The first case is approval of conditional use 2211013 for an event facility. The applicant is Rita Oheni Amako. The owner is currently the Orchard United Methodist Church, property located at 1940 Highway 81, Parcel C 510194, this is in District 3. And as I stated, this, she would like to have an event facility. There was no opposition and the board recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? I'm going to open a public hearing on this. Please come forward and tell us what you want to do, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Board. As stated, my name is Rita Oheni Amako, and I am looking to do an event facility at that location to do family-type events, like what we call micro weddings, small weddings, graduations, any type, type of family celebrations.
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that supports this rezoning would like to speak? Is there anyone here that opposes this rezoning would like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this and entertain a motion from the board.
I make a motion to approve by the Planning Zoning Committee to approve here.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass is unanimous. 5.1.
Okay, this is, excuse me, alteration to zoning conditions. The case number is AZ23010004. The applicant is Bill Hartley. Owners are John Jeremy and James Mizzawi and Darren Wasaleski. Properties located on Highway 78 and Tommy Dillard Road. The map and parcel number is 178 parcel 47A. This is in District 4. This came before the board a few months ago and it, it's like there's a, a line that comes about here. So it's this property that's right in here. And the board approved this rezon, or commercial use, with conditions. And one of those conditions was that there would be no entrance off of Tommy Dillard, that the entrance be on Highway 78 only. Another condition was for the proposed use as presented and no storage of chemical products. The, there's applicant, the applicant is here with legal counsel to represent a desire to have some of these conditions changed. So, but this is conditioned by the board of commissioners, it did not go to the Planning Commission.
And the Planning Commission did not recommend the conditions?
That's correct, they just approved it.
All right, I'll hope, open a public hearing again on this and ask the applicant if they want to make a statement and please come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Thompson and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Jeff Haymore. I'm with the law firm of Dillard Sellers. My law partner Doug Dillard is here. And we appreciate the opportunity to present for a few minutes this case. I've handed you what, what lawyers call a constitutional objection letter. In speaking with your county attorney, who's been great to work with, I know you see these from time to time, and so we're doing that just to preserve our rights. I'd like to introduce just real quickly Bill Hartley, if you could just stand up and raise your hand. He is the applicant, he is the business owner. James Hester is the real estate broker. James, you just raise your hand there. As well as John Brewer of WNE Engineering. And I think the property owners are here as well. And each will speak to you, have an opportunity to share and answer really any questions that you have. We're asking that the county work with us to resolve the zoning condition, limiting the access as well as the uses. And that's the purpose of, of the land development ordinance, is to balance those rights, often competing rights. Let me read to you what the code says, section 119T. "To provide for the protection of the constitutional rights and obligations of all citizens within the county." And so we come before you, really in a spirit of hopefully resolving this. The county has an obligation and a duty to work with us to resolve any objections. And that's from a Georgia Supreme Court case, DeKalb County v. Flynn. Now, that was a rezoning case somewhat similar here, where the county raised some concerns about increased truck, truck traffic on a particular road caused by the applicant's proposed warehouse development. This is what the court said. "We add that the county has the duty and obligation to work with property owners to allow them the highest and best use of their property by considering on its own motion ways in which the county's objections to a proposed development could be eased by county action." As I said, we're not here to, to fight. We want to find a, a solution that works for all of us. We were told that the reason for the access limitation prohibiting access off of Tommy Dillard was to avoid a potential issue there up at the right corner there at Tommy Dillard, Michael Road, and Highway 78. That's what the DOT, DOT comments that you have in your package before you tonight say. Now, put aside... Now, put aside that there are three commercial properties just to our east that each have access in front, just like us, on Highway 78 as well as Tommy Dillard. But even putting that aside, you know, we've offered to avoid that concern at that intersection by limiting access to Tommy Dillard to left turn only for our trucks out of Tommy Dillard. And then when they return in the evening, to come back through Cattle Barn up to Tommy Dillard and turn right. And in that way, avoid that intersection altogether. That's what I'm talking about, trying to come up with a solution. But we understand that maybe now the objection is to any use of Tommy Dillard Road. Feels like for us, the goalposts are moving a little bit. No one spoke in opposition, as you might have heard, at the original Planning Commission and Board of Commissioner meeting when this was originally rezoned. Now, James and John both met with the GDOT Access Permit Inspector. His name is Brent Williams. And they did that in a site visit in December after these conditions were imposed upon us. And Brent looked at the property and he opined that the access should be off Tommy Dillard Road. In your package on the last page is that email from Brent Williams stating that. Now, the agenda before you tonight says that the county staff had a meeting with another person at GDOT. Maybe it's even Brent's boss, Jason Dykes. We weren't present at that meeting, so we don't know. We weren't invited. To our knowledge, Mr. Dykes has not been on the site. He certainly has not conducted a site visit with us. I don't know that he's here tonight to answer your question or to be cross-examined by us. And so respectfully, we would assert that any statements of Mr. Dykes, of what he said or transpired at this meeting constitute legal hearsay. Just to get away from the lawyer-legalee stuff, you need to know that to build a driveway off of Highway 78, we anticipate would cost somewhere between $750,000 up to $1 million and will lead to a lot of delay in opening Bill's business. By comparison, building a driveway off of Tommy Dillard would cost about $100,000. Now, we do contend that prohibiting access completely off of Tommy Dillard is a taking of a valuable property right. I won't go into all the legal assertions of why that is. I don't know that that's necessarily relevant for you. But there is case law from the Georgia Supreme Court that says when a county takes or prohibits access to a road, even if the property owner has another access point, that constitutes a compensable taking for which compensation is required. Now, obviously, you're not exercising the right of eminent domain. You're using your zoning power. But we believe that whether you use eminent domain, if you can't do that directly without having to pay compensation, we believe you cannot use the zoning power to do indirectly what you cannot do directly through the eminent domain power. I won't repeat a lot of what I said in my January 27th letter that kind of goes through point by point why these conditions should be removed. As I said in my letter here, we do offer alternative language that is acceptable to our client that goes back to that duty to work with us. We're trying to find a compromise. And so with that, I would like to turn just some time, just quickly over to Bill to just share with you who he is and what his business is. And again, if you have questions, we want to answer those and we want to hopefully get to a solution. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Hartley. I'm with First Environmental, wanting to bring my business to Walton County. The events that I saw tonight made me want to come here. You know, like a big family. Our business is a lot like that. The company's 25 years old, started back in 1997. We provide the best product in the industrial cleaning business. What that is, is we're a company that gets dirty. The work is hot and hard and nasty and stinky and cold and difficult and long. And that doesn't sound like a job anybody wants. But that's what we do. We build our business by being employee-focused. We provide truly great jobs to personnel. We invest locally in the community. We hire in the community. We train personnel. We get from the community. We have an internal trade school, which we bring our personnel in and build them up and grow them. We provide ability to gain long-term wealth. So we give people a great job, something that's really not common anymore. We're a do-it-right contractor. We do what we say. We say what we do. We treat people like humans, something that's not done much anymore. So thank you for entertaining us. Look forward to a great outcome. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
What kind of trucks are you going to have?
Lot of pickup trucks. Lot of pickup trucks, 10-wheel vacuum trucks and just open trailers.
Any other questions?
What type of waste are you collecting?
We're not collecting any waste. We go onsite and clean at manufacturing sites. That used to be a former thing we do. We're not collecting waste. We'll have about six personnel that will start off at the site. Hope to build up to 10 to 15 to 20 over time. That will take a little bit of time. The labor market is tough today. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we have Mr. Brewer come up and just quickly share with you his conversations with DOT so that you have...
By all means.
...the record? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Brewer with WNE Engineering. I guess the main thing that I want to try to get across here tonight is I follow county protocol on this to the T. First thing I done was met with the Planning Director and got their blessing on it. Then we got on the agenda for the Planning Department meeting, Planning and Zoning meeting. There, no opposition, passed. This was more or less what I've seen over the last 30 years. At this point, it should have been just a formality. Then there's no sense in beating the dead horse of the events that happened live at the meeting that particular time. But I sit down and said, yes, sir, whatever. You know, it is what it is. You have the last word on it. I scheduled a meeting with Brent Williams. It's the DOT, our area representative for DOT. Me and Richard Hester met him onsite and we walked the property. We looked at the adjoining driveways. We looked at the adjacent driveways to our property that were just put in less than four months prior to this. And he was of the opinion that it was a safety issue to have other, the adjoining property, the D cell lane would have to overlap into the adjoining property right there by at least 200 foot.
John, how much frontage on Highway 78 does it have?
Our parcel? Are you talking about our parcel?
Yes, the parcel that's in question.
It's about 360.
Yeah, I think so too. About 360 feet.
360.
And it takes about 400 foot from end to, well, actually a little bit longer than that from end to end. And what Mr. Williams was saying, well, goodness, if you do make it fit, you're going to have to shift this drive so far down to the left-hand side of the property that it'll be a front-loaded street. So if we're going to have a front-loaded driveway, a DOT driveway, that we can only access one side of until we get into our property and make major turns in the road, it's just not feasible. It didn't look safe to me to begin with. That's the main reason I put the driveway on the design over on Tommy Dillard Road. That and the fact that I knew that the parcel beside us right there had just been rezoned prior to that for truck parking and just had a new driveway put in it. And that's less than 150 feet from our property corner. So with that all being said, I met with Mr. Williams. He told us his opinion. I came back to the office. I sent him an email and said, Mr. Williams, if you don't mind, would you please send me an email telling me, you know, basically what we talked about in the field? And his response was, and I think you've got it in your packet right there, but in looking at the property in ingress egress to the location off the county road would be safer because it would be entering and exiting at the State Route 10, an existing intersection with good site distance. And I know that there's three roads that comes together right there, but that's on the top of a hill. That's a pretty good intersection right there as far as site distance goes and whatnot. So just to me, it's just like it's just unneeded. And again, too, we followed protocol from start to finish. And then we followed up with the zoning modification. And this is the answer that I got. All I did was just report this back to my client.
Thank you.
It's 336 feet. I didn't want to mislead the board. I'm happy to...
That's fine. He said 360, but it's 330 feet. Total acreage of the tract that's in question?
7.7, is that right?
7.7 acres?
Yes.
And only 332 feet of frontage?
36, yes.
36. Then my last question, how much frontage is on Tommy Dillard?
150 accord, and I've got the survey. I'm happy to pass it around.
I had seen it earlier, but I didn't photo memorize the boundary description. Okay. Anyone else want to make a statement for this to be changed? Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Board. My name is Matt Mazzawi. I'm listed as James on the ownership. My brother John Mark, Jeremy Martin, and Darren Wasileski, cousin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. These guys have put out a wonderful presentation. I've looked through it. Bottom line is, you know, we've been long-term taxpayers and property owners in Walton County. We have tried to be very good stewards of the property. We think this is good stewardship. You know, we think this is appropriate use. I planted those pines, you know, to take care of that property 17 years ago. Spent a lot of money to do that, yet to harvest that, you know. But that was just something we did because we thought that was appropriate for that property. We wanted to take care of the land. We love that property. It's beautiful. You know, our parents were property owners in Walton County for many years and that's something they passed on to us to be good stewards of the land. Got a nice golf course somebody used to take care of, you know. But my point is, I'm more concerned about the precedent this sets because that is a commercial use corridor and that's appropriate use of this land. And if this is not appropriate here, I'm concerned about the next parcel that we've never sold anything. I mean, what happens to the next parcel that we want to sell? I do believe, just looking at that and having been on that property hundreds of times, that that's the safest place for a road to come off. But that's not my area of expertise. That's others. But I do think that that's the way I would want it to be done. And coming down Tommy Dillard as a car occupant, I would want that access versus coming off of 78 where people are moving a lot heavier traffic. So I think that's appropriate use. I would hope the board would remove the conditions that were set on that that were not administered by the Planning Department. Thank you for your time.
I would just reiterate that our family's been property owners. Soon as I got out of dental school, my dad taught me to invest in property. I've been paying on property in Walton County for 25 years and like he said, we've never sold anything. Our family has finally seen a couple of properties that we could harvest, but we haven't had that opportunity. I'd like to, you know, finally sell something. I think, I agree. I think this is a great proposal for this property. And we are a little concerned if we can't use these county roads. We bought this piece of property because it had three county roads and we knew that that, as our dad taught us, that that would be a good piece of property because you have all that access. And now it's kind of like we can't use the access that we bought it for. So like you said, we've planted pines. We've kept it beautiful. We want good growth in this county. We want sustainable growth. We don't want it too crowded like most people don't. So we hope you'll approve this and remove that stipulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does the board, please, come forward?
I'm Bobby Beck of 1110 Gene Bell Road. And I'm a small business owner here in Walton County. And with as fast as our county is growing, I feel like the Board of Commissioners should definitely do anything that is going to benefit the job growth in our county because there's a lot more people moving to the county, but not more jobs moving to the county, which more jobs in the county is going to put better growth and also it's going to allow more purposes for the land than it just sitting stagnant right now. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here in opposition to lifting restrictions or what was previously done on this? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board if they have more questions, please ask them now or if they're ready to make a decision.
On the DOT, I mean, obviously this being Highway 78, I'm a little confused. We got two different answers coming from the DOT?
All right, thank you, Jeremy. This last DOT letter I have not seen where a DOT employee said that it would be better off the county road. I saw one from another DOT that said it would be a traffic hazard trying to exit out at the point up there. Coming out on time and up. I've been back out there several times. The vision, you got a clear view of traffic at that intersection at that point, both ways. If you're going toward Athens, you can get across, wait until the traffic and then go to Athens. If you're going back toward Monroe, it's just a right-hand turn. Sharona, which is the position of DOT on this? I realize how much DOT access costs and having it is valuable because of the, not only visibility but access off the state road.
Yes, sir. So I actually talked to both of the DOT representatives myself. I talked to Mr. Williams, who did say that he thought it would be better for them to come off of Tommy Dillard and onto Michael Road for the site distance purpose. So, and that was after the meeting. Okay? Then we attended a meeting at DOT for some other purpose, for another purpose, not for this. But while we were there, we went and asked them, you know, I asked the gentleman, you know, I said, if you guys have concerns, it would really help our department a lot and the commissioners if you would send it to me instead of just saying coordination is required. So he then said that this intersection here, that he was very concerned about this intersection. If there were cars stacked on Michael Road, there's somebody, you know, waiting to pull out at Tommy Dillard. More importantly, he said, if there's school bus, if there's a school bus there and there's a couple of cars behind him. He said, I'm coming down Highway 78 to turn onto Michael Road to go to Tommy Dillard. So I'm sitting here with my blinker on to turn left. Then he's coming down the road behind me in his truck with a trailer and he can't get into the road. There's not enough room. That was their concern. And that was, he's a traffic safety engineer. I'm not sure if Brent is, but Brent told me the same thing that John has in his letter.
Okay. All right. I can tell you Tommy Dillard Road doesn't have 100 cars a day on it. I'm sorry. It would push it to do that. So, but anyway.
How many vehicles a day will be coming in and out? If you said that, I missed it.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great question. And we put this in our letter in the morning about 5:00 AM...
In the morning, about 5:00 AM, employees arrive about 6:00, and they leave their personal cars, and then they get in these trucks about 5:00 AM, and they leave for the job, and they come back about 7:00 PM in the evening. So it's about 6:00 to 8:00, I think, is what we put in our letter to be just safe enough, coming into the site in the morning, and 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening, assuming it's a one-day job. Sometimes it's a multi-day job, so they don't come back to, to home base every day. Very, very small traffic compared to whatever other uses in B3 that are allowed.
Okay.
You know, Tommy Dillard is mainly residential. I can't think except for these couple that have driveways nearing 78 on it that have businesses. But it has water, it has, you know, everything that the county has. Of course, there's no sewer out there, and probably no gas on Tommy Dillard, but...
All right.
Chairman, what was it, they offered some type of, what was the condition you said to help ease the, I think I remember you stating something about y'all would to, to try to work with the county to ease our concerns about safety. You would do trucks, trucks coming in where and leaving where? What was that statement?
He was going to take them down to Cattle Barn Road, so it wouldn't add to this concern at DOT, and be left out only, I think's what he said.
That, that was a compromise. If the true concern is that intersection, that is a way to...
That would take away the concern of a, God forbid, a bottleneck up at Michael Road, but...
It's not our preference to be, I mean, to be totally transparent.
I mean, it's no big deal. You go extra, you know, quarter mile. Okay.
And, you know, me a lawyer, I can't stop talking. In your code, it actually says...
You get paid while you talk.
I do. The, it, it has a table that says, where should the access come from? And in the case of us, the amount of parking of cars that we generate, it actually says the preferred access is the county road, not a major collector.
All right. This is seven acres of property, B3. If this gentleman goes out of business and a larger company comes in, they have more employees, is there any way to carry forward comments like a left turnout, exit Cattle Barn or something down the road? Is there? Seven acres is a fairly large piece of property, zone B3. What's other uses for B3, Sharona?
There are a number of reasons for B3. That, you know, some could have heavy truck traffic like harder drugs. I think there was 12 or 13 things that I looked at, you know, that we wanted to forgive it, but I can't remember on my head. I guess it's not a cloud. But there was about 12 or 13 things that would create traffic with big, large trucks. But then there's, I suppose more of that would not. A lot of them.
And you don't have any tractor-trailer deliveries or the large semi-truck. Was some sort of deed restricting, restriction, restricting a business that would utilize the large trailers and trucks to get an exit on Tommy Dillard? You know, every now and then, once in a while, something's going to be delivered. I ordered a 36-inch lawnmower, and it come on a 42-foot trailer.
Right.
You know...
I don't, I don't want to restrict that. I mean, I may occasionally get a delivery, but it's not, not, not normal. It's not a part of our business.
Okay. I'm just asking questions.
Again, I'm, I would love for this, the board to remove these conditions tonight. I'd really like this to happen for us and our family. But again, more importantly, I'm worried about putting unnecessary and conditions that shouldn't be there. Realistically, there are trucks coming out of the neighboring parcels right now. They got a new, brand-new driveway. There's cars, commercial vehicles going in and out of that area. So why put a restriction that nobody can police on this parcel? And honestly, I think you...
I just asked a question.
And I'm just, because it was brought forward, I just want to state that I truly believe, I drive this road all the time, that the safest intersection is going toward Michael Road. That is a very visible intersection. My in-laws live about a half a mile down here toward Athens on the right. So when you come, I come out and make a left turn on a 78 all the time, and it's super safe. I got my kids in the car. I feel, it's great sight visibility. I think it would be a disservice to the community to push it back to the residential area to have them come down a longer road. If they need to take a right turn out, albeit, they can do it from either intersection. But I think it would be a disservice to the homeowners to put a, put any kind of extra vehicle down near their property. I mean, if, if the proposed user wants to do that, that's fine. But to put a condition on there that nobody can police and enforce, to me, seems silly. And again, it sets a precedent that I think is not, it's not enforceable, you know. So again, this is, this is maybe contrary to what they're offering, but I think it's an unnecessary and unfair condition for this area. And I really believe, you know, that intersection's safer. And if the DOT felt so strongly that it came off, that the access was 78, they should have given us our code or regulation or guideline to go over. They said, "We prefer," and several, several of their comments was, "We would prefer that." That's great. We prefer other, right? So, you know, respectfully, if they'd given us something to sink our teeth into a code or guideline that dictated that, I would respect that. But this is just a preference, and our preference is to have property rights. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Okay, we can go back and forth on this. I'm not going to ask any hypothetical questions anymore. All right. We need, do need to move on. The board, if someone would like to make a motion, we'll try to bring it to a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I appreciate everybody's back and forth and the additional knowledge that just came in. I would like to remove the first condition, which is for requested purpose only, because I understand there's some other land there that, from what I was told, you may want to add additional businesses on this seven-acre tract going forward, which I totally understand seven acres is a decent amount of land. So I would like to make a motion to remove the first condition.
Could you state that first condition?
The first condition would be for requested purpose only.
All right, we have a motion.
What did he say?
The motion was to remove the first condition, which was for that business only, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Because it sounds like that they have additional businesses that are going to want to come in on this seven-acre tract as well. The way one of the drawings that I saw, and it sounds like you agree with, so I would like to turn around and remove the condition that, you know, his businesses and others. I don't want to limit him to just that business.
It may help if you clarify the other two conditions that were there as well.
The other two conditions that were on there was no on-site chemical or hazardous waste storage, which you said wouldn't be there anyway, correct? And then the entrance and exit on Highway 78 only.
All right, we have a motion. If we don't get a second, we can try again, or if we get a second, we'll call a vote. I'm going to declare that one dies from a lack of a second. Does anyone else want to make a motion? I don't mind taking a stab at it. I move that access be allowed on Tommy Dillard. 330 feet's not long enough for D cell lane to get into this property. And it's B3, it stays B3 and entitled to B3 uses. Mine's probably going to die from a lack of a second, too.
You want to add amendment to that, or what the writer said with the no...
No hazardous chemicals. I'll add that.
The, the purpose of that motion, though, was taking the recommendation of our own Public Works to limit the traffic to Highway 78. You could actually do an inverted, you could bring the road in some off of 78. Was the purpose of that to try to follow suit from what our own people...
I disagree with Public Works, too, at this point. I added a hazardous chemical. Do I have a second? I have a second. Those, any further discussion? I think we discussed this, yeah. Those in favor of this, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
We have two opposed, Kirkland and Lee. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And gentlemen, this approve?
This approve.
All right, we're going to move on to the administrative consent agenda. You've had time to review. There's items in there, of course, like our minutes and radar equipment we're donating to the Ascension Program Management. This is a grant application that we need help in dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and then the ACCG Business Guarantee. If anybody has any questions, if not, entertain a motion, let that be approved.
Most approve.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Dixon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Warren. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Resolutions. We're updating our civil service personnel rules and regulations now that we have a county manager, and we're going to take a lot of that responsibility off the old chairman's back and put it on the county manager. And I hope you've had time to review those. We need a motion to adopt the amendments.
Still moved.
Got a motion to adopt. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Public Works. We have a notice from the City of Monroe where we dump our waste at their transfer station of a pretty good price hike. And I think John and, John, both Johns have priced every landfill around here, see if we could take it ourselves, see if we could save some money. And no, City of Monroe's still a fair deal with the price hike. And they're proposing, if you don't mind me just throwing it out, they're proposing going up on the green bags from 150 to $2.
Yes, sir.
And from $45 per ton to $65 per ton, and that's about, that's what we'd be paying the City of Monroe.
Yes, sir.
So we're just trying to break even on this, but that's it, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for John? Entertain a motion to...
Effective date.
I'm sorry? That's a good idea. You're a good clerk. We need an effective date when we start this.
Do we need to advertise this rate increase?
I would, I would recommend that we advertise that, yes.
Yeah, you're going to catch flak. Anyway, let's do it at least 30 days.
Okay.
Is that sufficient? Okay, counsel?
By hand.
By, by hand. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve that 30 days.
Effective in 30 days. All right, we have a motion. We got a second. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Since Carter Watkins County cut out to Florida, and the employee clinic turned out to be a two-year, it's going to be a five-month deal before we cut the ribbon on the door. But we need precision planning to do the final design elevations and everything. And this is a acceptance of a bid. They've proposed to us to do that.
I make a motion to approve?
We got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Appointments. Walton County Development Authority. Terms are coming up, and they, the authority is recommending to reappoint Thomas Carter and Betty Ray. Thomas Carter's from Loganville. Betty Ray is from South Circle. It'll be another four-year term. Entertain a motion to accept those.
I'd like to make that motion.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now, the county manager can take over.
I've got a couple of updates from some of the different departments that I'd like to share with everybody. In Parks and Recreation, spring registration is now complete. We've seen a 17% increase over last year. So we'll end up having 2,211 participants in baseball, softball, soccer, and track and field this spring.
That number again, it's how many?
2,211.
Two thou, okay.
And, and you can just imagine the pressure that that's putting on staff and the fields in order to coordinate, schedule access opportunities for everybody. Obviously, the, the highest level of that is in West Walton. Public Works and Facilities, I just wanted to thank them for preparation of the site and coordinating the installation of the new parking area between the brand-new Planning and Development Office and the Employee Health Clinic on Court Street. That project is being completed in-house, all the preparation is, and it's saving the taxpayers quite a bit of money on, due to the expertise of our staff in being able to do that. EMA has recently completed a grant application to the Georgia Environmental Management Agency, I mean, Emergency Management Agency, and that's for funds which will provide Walton County with an updated hazard mitigation plan. In the Tax Assessor's Office, they're well on their way to updating the digest and valuations. But they're right now in the process of updating and renewing over 150 conservation use covenant applications across Walton County. In Elections, they're in the process of redistricting the City of Monroe, and we now have 78,005 registered voters in Walton County. In Clean and Beautiful, they've scheduled a upcoming shred event on April 22 from 10 till 12 o'clock at Loganville City Hall, and that's in partnership with the Loganville Lions Club. In Planning and Development, we're, we ended the year averaging, 2022, averaging 45 single-family development permits per month, with a high of 64 in June. And in Water, we now have 17,203 customers across the county. Pipe is starting to arrive, and we expect the contractors to start installation of the North Loop Phase 2 in the next two to three weeks. And sharing tank rehab has, has started resulting in the entire tank having a tent placed over it, in case you wonder what's going on up there. HR, we had 21 new replacement hires in Ju, last, in January. They've been very busy because every single department has a ton of questions as we enter into the budget preparation center process. And then we had over 70 employees participate in the vital health screening program that was sponsored by HR. In Fire, one of the noted things there is they've started a new EMT program with all county personnel, and there's 17 students in that class. And in Magistrate Court, with the appointment of Judge Morris to the Superior Court bench, Judge Burke has appointed Bartlett Burton as an associate judge, and he's the son of the previous Superior Court Judge, Jean Benton. So... son of the previous Superior Court Judge, Jean Benton. So Bartlett Benton will be the new judge in the magistrate court there. In Finance, FY twenty twenty-four, budget prep is well underway. Everybody's just submitted everything to that department, and all W2s and ten ninety-nines have been taken out. And they have a brand-new program that they're actually utilizing for debt book that'll help with the tracking of bond debt as well as active leases across the entire county. And that'll end up helping consolidate, modernize that department as well as preparing and helping them greatly with the audit. And finally, in Facilities, we'll be reaching out to you because in addition to everything, keeping everything going, we'll be scheduling a ribbon cutting for the new Social Circle Senior Center, a groundbreaking that needs to be rescheduled for the Good Hope Fire Station, as well as a ribbon cutting for the brand-new Walton County Extension Office. So quite a few new projects have all been coming up out of the ground.
And not far behind that, we hope, Planning and Zoning and a new clinic.
Exactly, exactly. We'll give you updates on that next month. And just wanted to highlight that we've, thanks to the Sheriff's Department, we just had one of our own deputies highlighted on Eleven Alive for their role as a school resource officer over at one of our local schools. And the highlight was just because of them serving as a role model for the kids that are there and taking their time out to make their lives better, but also just additional, very positive response and recognition of law enforcement in our community. So
All right, thank you.
That's everything I've got for you tonight.
Thank you, John. All right. I have been talking to Peters and Foster's about leasing ten parking spaces across from our clinic and HR. When Planning and Zoning, even though we're gonna have a lot of parking in between those two buildings, I feel like it's not gonna be enough. And I would like for the board to look at entertaining a one-year lease on ten spaces. They have quoted me a rate of a thousand dollars a month. If we use them twenty days a month, that's five dollars a parking space per business day. You, you can't go to Athens and park for five dollars. And it would be a lease that can be renewable on an annual basis. I'd like to go ahead and tie this down with Peters and Foster's if, if y'all so approve. And Hank and our sign shop will sign the parking spaces, county employees only during these business hours. We're not gonna use them on weekends, interfere with downtown activities. Matter of fact, we're probably going to make sure our parking that we're about to undertake will be available for additional parking for events and stuff on non-business days. And if y'all would give me that authority, we'll get our county attorney drafting a lease. And we'll do effective day, I hope, Sharni, you get in in the next month. So let's do April first, if that's okay with the board and y'all okay with that.
Don't we still have the parking over there, like on down the street behind Brown Hole?
Yeah, potluck parking that they have marked as municipal parking, compliments of the city of Monroe. We own that parking lot. I don't want to get in a war over parking spaces for the city of Monroe, but the clinic is gonna be visited. They're estimating, John, what was this estimated visits a day? It was, it was up there. Employees will be taking thirty minutes off during the day to run to the clinic. And we have a great design. It'd be five people in there at all times seeing practitioners and doctors. And once it really gets to going, and then Sharni and them, people gonna be hunting the, at least for a year, I need these extra parking spaces reserved. So Tracy and all the others could park over that Peters and Foster's walk to work and leave spaces open for buying building permits and getting all the things that code does.
I'll make a motion to approve and start him April first.
I'll second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. That's Jeremy and Kirkland. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That one passes. Are there any announcements anyone wants to make? Sir? We had no one sign up for public comment, but thank you. No one signed up for public comment tonight, which is a good thing. We, we haven't upset a lot of people. And I would like a very quick executive session to discuss land acquisition that we don't know, need to do right now in a public meeting. And then I'm not expecting any announcement to be made out of executive session. But.
Move to adjourn for executive session?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
不上大学，不上学
Entertain a motion and come back into regular session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Yeah, Hank waited until we got through.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Boy, that always gets a quick response. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. He, Hank waited until we got through to turn the air on.
Yeah, it got cool.